Hi, Beck.
All right, so we are.
We are recording. All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the order, the May 18th, Port Orchard City Council Work Study Session. And due to the governor's stay safe, stay at home order, we are still operating on Zoom. And the members for the members of the public, we've published a Zoom link and phone numbers for remote access to access our meetings. And so with that, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join me in the in the pledge. Brandy's bringing a flag up. There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right. So our first item this evening is the final draft of the downtown subarea plan and proposed amendments to the Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations. Mr. Mr. Bond, this is yours.
Thank you, and good evening, members of council. Before you tonight is your last opportunity to review the downtown subarea plan prior to bringing it forward for consideration and hopefully adoption at our meeting on the 25th. I believe that you received a presentation on this in at the March Work Study Meeting, and that was in advance of the document going to the Planning Commission. We made a few changes in response to your comments at that meeting. Since that time, the CIPA process has concluded. We issued the Environmental Impact Statement on the downtown subarea plan, and the Planning Commission held a public hearing about two weeks ago. And we had a couple of members of the public come and testify. And ultimately, there is no no testimony in opposition, mostly just a few questions from the public. And the Planning Commission recommended the document for city council approval. So tonight, I want to briefly just walk you through to share with the public and with the commission, the council members, just kind of the the final form of the plan. And then also walk you through a couple of things that you haven't seen previously, which include some cleanup to the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Element, Chapter Two of our Comprehensive Plan, as well as the development regulations which are are being brought forward as part of the final ordinance to actually implement some elements of the plan that are not currently in code. So I'm going to share my screen now. And I'm I'm focused on Chapter Three, which is really the the pretty graphics and the visuals that help you understand what is in the goals and policies of the document. You've probably seen this graphic before, and I'm not sure in March whether the piped streams were shown on the plan. But one of the comments we did receive in the final round of review from both the Tribe and the Department of Fish and Wildlife was that the the stream running up Port Orchard Boulevard and the stream that comes out near City Hall, we wanted to show that those are piped streams and that we want to to look at opportunities for daylighting those. There's also one of these over near the Kentucky Fried Chicken on the other side of town. So those are some graphical changes that were made to the plan since the last time a draft was released. That required some of the buildings that were just shown conceptually here off of Port Orchard Boulevard. They had to be shifted a little bit further to the east. Then, of course, with the final site selection of the Community Event Center, we had to sort of reconfigure the west downtown area. And we actually did a change order with our consultant because after meeting with Kitsap Bank, the developer for the 640 Bay Street property, as well as the the bank parking lot site and the port of Bremerton, we realized that that this area of the plan could be a little bit more refined. And so I think we spent about $25,000 refining this plan. And that was actually funded by, we split it three ways. The city paid a third, and then the bank and the developer also chipped in to cover that expense. In terms of projects that are included in the plan, one of the capital projects that was shown in our traffic report associated with the environmental review of the project was we do need intersection improvements at Port Orchard Boulevard and Bay Street. So there is a proposed roundabout as part of the transportation network. The shaded crosshatch gray area along Bay Street here, this is the area where we frequently have flooding, and we've identified that as a project because we need to elevate that road so that it it does not continue flooding. And then the the future development can be can match the elevation of that 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 new road finished elevation. We have several new open spaces and parks along the waterfront, specifically where the Kitsap Bank building is now. And between the future Community Event Center and the water, we're envisioning both a pedestrian pathway, but also shoreline restoration and access to the waterfront with plazas at Orchard and Port Street that will, Port Street will still include parking, but it will also provide better access to the water and also sort of back of house operations for our proposed Community Event Center. I think all of you are aware that Kitsap Bank is looking at redeveloping the site at the northwest corner of Frederick and Bay Street. And so the just a conceptual building design is shown there. And one of the pieces of feedback we received from the bank is they really would like to, they they want some surface parking in a turnaround area for the marina, but they also want more open space on the water side of that building. And so we've incorporated that along with our our sewer lift station projects. There's a little bit more of a a public gathering area behind both the bank and the Community Event Center with Orchard Street being a central plaza. And please stop me at any time if you have any questions before I move on to other graphics. I'm going to move on to the the rest of our downtown area. And and I apologize, the pages aren't displaying side by side for me right now. But along the waterfront, we've talked previously about creating kind of a shared street and turning the buildings on the waterfront so that they both face Bay Street and face a new street that has on-street parking. So the gray dashed line here represents a new road, which again has park space similar to what is there now, but probably something that gets refreshed a little bit. And on-street parking and sidewalk seating for restaurants or other things that are along the waterfront and that waterfront proposed street. We we did show that the, actually, I think on the next graphic, we showed the Marina Park. We've talked about expanding that previously. I believe that's shown on a different graphic and reflected in our goals and policies. Want to move on. So this is, this is more of a refined drawing of what you just just saw, really focusing on the core of downtown. The hill climb between Prospect and Bay Street is still included in this block next to City Hall. Previously, it had been oriented on Port Street when we thought that the 711 site would be the preferred location for the Community Event Center. But because the that site was determined to be unavailable, we we shifted directions and kind of rotated our our plan so that it's more oriented on the Orchard Street axis, which doesn't unfortunately have as good of a view of the Olympic Mountains, but still has a great water view and view of the the naval shipyard. This this concept also better illustrates this new street along the waterfront between Sydney Avenue. And on the previous page, you can see Frederick Avenue here where you still have on-street parking. The amount of parking that's actually surface parking has been reduced on the waterfront, and you've gained a lot of park space. And we have made up for it and then some by providing structured parking within this building bounded by Robert Geiger, Frederick Street and Bay Street and below Prospect. That that parking structure, we, one of the code changes we had to make was to provide an allowance for driveway, a driveway to go into the lower level parking deck from Bay Street, provided that access is to the south of the intersection of Port and Bay. So they can really only put it along this this straight section that is parallel to the block that City Hall is on. And once you start going around the corner, that's where the the no driveway cuts rules take effect. And then a driveway to the middle deck and the upper decks would be from Robert Geiger and Frederick Avenue respectively. Moving on to the east downtown, this really hasn't changed significantly, with the exception that the pipe stream, as I mentioned, under 711 is now shown as a dashed line here with that being a possible opportunity for for daylighting that stream. And that was one of the, again, one of the comments from the Department of Fish and Wildlife. One of the, one of the changes that you'll see in our code revisions that I didn't mention, but I think has been discussed now for several months, is the the downtown Hyde Overlay District, we're making a few changes to that. And so especially as you're going up Bethel towards the Mile Hill Roundabout, we're going from a a four-story height limit up to a five-story height limit in the downtown Hyde Overlay District. And I want to go back to the east downtown, the the block next to City Hall, the area right next to City Hall, we're keeping it four stories, but we're allowing five stories as you move towards Frederick. And that the main purpose there was to make sure that the building steps down and doesn't impose on the the size and massing of City Hall. But in order to pay for the parking structures associated with replacing our waterfront parking, you've got to have that extra height to really make a project viable from the private sector. The other big issue that I wanted to bring up in the plan that still needs clarification and direction from council has to do with the zoning. And I guess before I get to that, the the county campus provisions really haven't changed since you last saw them. We've basically taken the county's adopted courthouse and county campus expansion plan and dropped it into the subarea plan, which includes providing a lot of parking that will certainly lighten the burden on the neighborhood and the neighbors who live around the courthouse, who are having county employees parking in front of their houses all day. So that is being addressed as part of the county plan. But you've seen quite a few presentations on their their plan. As I was mentioning, mentioning at your March meeting, you gave direction to staff. And one of the things that the mayor pointed out to me in our planning commission meeting that I had missed in giving direction to our consultant was that the existing zoning from Kitsap to Dwight along Sydney is R2. In the plan, the consultant had showed that as neighborhood mixed use, which would allow for a wider variety of housing types and the possibility of redevelopment. It was made clear to me that the council did not actually want to see that particular area change from commercial or from residential to to residential mixed use. And so in your packet tonight is an alternative map that would, if council provides that direction, we will substitute this map for the map that takes that that two and a half, or I guess, two full blocks and two half-block area and take it back to the R2 zoning so that there is effectively no change from Dwight to Kitsap between, I don't know the name of this right away. I can't think of it off the top of my head. And then they block.
Austin.
Thank you, Austin. So between Austin and then about halfway between Harrison and Sydney is where the breakpoint was between the residential mixed use and the R2 zoning. So I think I'll pause there and see if you have any discussion on the the zoning issue before I move on to the development regulations.
Correctly. So Cindy, I think it was you that brought that forward.
Yes, actually, and I do want to keep it at the residential designation. I was concerned about it showing as courthouse. You know, an extension of the courthouse. Those are historic homes, and I think it's very important to preserve that area of Port Orchard.
Other thoughts?
Fred, you also had some concerns.
I think I think Fred spoke to it also.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with what Cindy was saying. Nick, is this, can I ask you about the public notice now or later?
You can ask me about the bug notice now. Sure.
Okay, I heard from obviously, someone in the the orange area who who didn't know that they apparently didn't know about the planning commission meeting. So I was just wondering, um, did the notices go only to the residents if your zoning might change and not necessarily if you were in the map boundary there?
Correct. The so the the subarea planning notices, when we did the initial outreach on the plan, we sent a radius, everybody within 800 feet of the subarea boundary was notified of the process. And we also asked people to sign up if they'd like to continue to be informed. When we got later in the process, when we had this final public hearing, which was, I think, the third in a series of meetings, we did send specific mailing notice to those people whose properties were changing zones to say, this is your last chance to comment, your zoning is changing, and we want to make sure that you're aware of this. And then, of course, we also are having a public hearing at the city council meeting. So this is one last chance for the the public to come and comment on the proposed plan next week before you consider adopting the plan. And so if anything else comes up, you've got an opportunity to respond to it. Or if we need to take two weeks and and fix something, there is an opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions, I want to.
One more question, sorry. Um, does this plan take into consideration closing off Klein at the, I'm sorry, closing off Division at Klein? Or is it sort of? That's something that the county has been pushing, but are we just neutral on that? Or are we incorporating that into our long-range plan?
Um, I'm I'm scrolling to that map. So the figure that we have been provided here shows division as kind of this yellow color. It it doesn't specifically say that we're going to close it or not close it, but the graphic implies that something is going to happen there, whether it be a shared street or making that into a plaza. But that would come forward as part of the county's permitting for for their project when they actually submit site development permits. I think we're we're open to it, at least in in, from a transportation perspective, engineering and transportation planning, we're open to it to create kind of that central plaza and gathering space between the courthouse and the administration building. But if you want to add specific goals or policies, this is certainly the opportunity to do that.
I think the answer is we're waiting for the county's plan.
Okay, so we're not supporting it now because I'm just concerned that if the county does that, it will increase the traffic that comes out on Sydney just by closing off Division at Klein. So I just want to make sure that they will have to go through a process where they will notify neighbors before they go through with closing off the street.
Yes, there will be a notice of application when they do their land disturbing activity permit. So the the sign will go up and the notices will go out to everybody within a certain proximity of the the project.
Fred, I don't think the proposal from the county was to close off Klein.
Uh, you're the consultant, the consultant said it twice. This was part of the law and justice expansion.
It's not to close Klein, it's to close.
I'm sorry, not close Klein, close off Division at Klein.
Division.
Right, Division would become part of a plaza, but Klein would be a central access way for some of the proposed uses and parking. So I I don't know that all the traffic that you're thinking on Sydney would be occurring.
There's a bus line that goes up Sydney Division through Klein, and I'm sure that could change. That's probably not. But I think there's a lot of traffic for people trying to get to the auditor's office. They won't be able to get to it from Klein, so they'd have to go around through Sydney.
Well, they they can take a a left on Dwight and come up Austin to Division. I mean, that's, that was the compromise. And the reason, part of the reason for that is you don't have good visibility at that intersection of Division and and Klein. And so they're trying to eliminate any possibility that somebody's going to even make an illegal left turn. It's currently signed for no left turn, but plenty of people still make that that movement, which isn't safe.
So the the long, the short answer is the county has a process, they need to submit their plan. It'll, there'll be, and there'll be a public process related to it.
Yeah, there was actually a county employee that got hit in that crosswalk, and that's why we did what we did.
All right. So, um, and just to revisit the neighborhood mixed use, I didn't hear anybody saying not to change that back to R2, but I just want to make sure that everybody's head was nodding since I can only see seven of you right now. All right, not hearing any objection. Okay, um, in terms of implementation, I'll stop sharing my screen now. The other part of the materials that came out in your packet included changes to the land use element of the Comprehensive Plan, that's Chapter Two. And so there's a red line document that shows a handful of cleanup items. And with this chapter, I want you to keep in mind that we are also amending Chapter Two as part of our annual Comprehensive Plan Amendment process. But this set of amendments is only to deal with implementation of the subarea plan. So some of the things that we will be doing later this summer are not being done in this action because they aren't directly related to the downtown plan. So the the changes, there's just generally a little bit of of cleanup. It's still referred to the downtown overlay district and the government civic center district. That chap, that section was cleaned up to make sure the verbiage matches our our subarea plan. And then the subarea plan itself, each each of our centers that is designated in the Comprehensive Plan has a little one or two-page write-up telling you about that center and where to find the details for that center and how it's to be developed. And so the downtown and county campus sections are actually being mostly deleted just simply to reference the the new subarea plan, which is now going to be Appendix D in the Comprehensive, in the Comprehensive Plan. So we're actually shortening Chapter Two by taking the previous goals and policies because they are being replaced now by what is in the the subarea plan. So when you get to section 2.7.5.1 of the Comprehensive Plan, that whole existing section has has been deleted. The map has been updated, and there's just one paragraph telling you what the center is and where to find, where to find that that document. And likewise, as I mentioned, the county campus, which is now consolidated with downtown, has just been deleted in its entirety because the the new subarea plan includes all the details for the county campus development. Um, moving on, there's some amendments to Chapter 20.35040 concerning the downtown mixed-use district. And actually, this is one of the few sections that is in red line and are straight through and underline. It's it's in multi-colors because the blue text that you see was actually introduced after the Planning Commission recommendation because we received a comment back from our consultant on the Community Event Center who said, hey, if you've got streets on all four sides of your building, if you're redeveloping an entire city block, you're you're essentially saying that you're not allowing parking on any side of the building, which conflicted with actually with the graphic that is in the subarea plan. So we added some additional language there concerning where you can locate parking within the downtown mixed-use zone. We also amended our build-to-zone requirements. Specifically, if you're providing public pedestrian-oriented space or a public civic building such as a community center, you don't have, you're not aiming for storefronts where you've got building glass windows right up to the sidewalk. We're actually allowing those buildings to be set back a little bit more so that you can have a more of a grand entrance to a a public-type building. And so we needed to create an exception to allow that sort of thing in our downtown mixed-use zone. Then in the downtown Hyde Overlay District, I mentioned that the map has been revised slightly and that going up Bethel, we now allow for five-story buildings. And also that one block next to City Hall is now, now shows that the the area that's set back from City Hall is now the DHOD 5 district. The other change is that our architect pointed out that due to mechanical requirements for building design these days, our, we had both a story limit, like we would say that the downtown Hyde Overlay District 3 was 38 feet, three-story limit. 38 feet, according to GGLO, who was the planner on the subarea plan and is also an architectural firm, advised us that we should increase that to 48 feet and three stories because you need that extra flexibility for mechanical equipment between floors. And story height is is more than what we had assumed in our code. And so this is a a recommendation to ensure that our, that redevelopment in our downtown is viable and and doesn't create unnecessary difficulties for for developers in the future. Also, the, just in the view protection overlay district, the the intent section of that code, I added that part of the intent of that overlay district is to implement the downtown subarea plan because previously it it didn't mention it. There were two changes in the use tables for the for the zones that concern parks and recreations and transit park and ride lots. Currently, to be a, for parks, we zone all of our park property as public, parks and recreation or public facilities. Because we don't own all of the areas that we are seeking to develop parks on downtown, there will be some proposed parks that are in areas, ZON, CMU, DMU, GMU, and BPMU. And so the, we wanted to make sure that we didn't have to rezone those properties prior to being able to construct park-type facilities. Likewise, the transit park and ride lots, previously in the commercial mixed-use zone, it was a conditional use in order to build a park and ride lot. And really, and actually, I think I've got the sorry, the downtown mixed-use zone. And I apologize, my my zoning tables were not lining up with their heading because I was trying not to give you eight pages of zoning table. But the downtown mixed-use, we are going to eliminate park and ride facilities in the downtown mixed-use zone because our goal is to move that parking off of the waterfront. Existing parking lots that are pay-to-park or or park and rides can remain. We're just not seeking to build more of those in the in the areas specifically zoned downtown mixed-use. They can happen in the gateway mixed-use or the areas around downtown, but not in that central core. The next zoning change in the parking chapter, the the parking standards for the downtown mixed-use zone have been modified slightly. The previously, you were exempt from providing off-street parking within the boundaries of Orchard Avenue and Harrison. And we are changing that if you're in the downtown mixed-use zone in the downtown subarea, we want to exempt ground floor uses altogether from providing parking because there's on-street parking throughout the downtown. So so that's one change. Previously, it was only a certain subset of buildings that had a ground floor exemption. Now it's going to be the entire downtown area. And this is also where that change I mentioned occurs, where we now allow driveways south of Port Street on on the state highway to facilitate that ground floor entrance into the parking structure on the block that includes 640 Bay Street. The other change here is that residential parking standards for the downtown subarea have been changed. Previously, they were based on bedroom counts, and this is changing them to one stall per unit. But if you don't have on-street parking serving your building immediately adjacent to your lot, it is a 1.25 standard so that that if you build eight units, you're you're getting an extra two parking spaces that would be shared among all of the 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 units. So it it is a a a slight reduction in the downtown residential parking standards to help encourage development. Also, in the design guidelines, we have the community design framework maps that identify storefront block frontages, varied block frontages and landscape block frontages. And to implement the downtown plan, especially around the Community Event Center and also the new plazas we're hoping to create with the hill climb and the Orchard Avenue and just the Orchard Avenue Plaza, we have added significant street corners where you have to do extra architectural treatments to really enhance those prominent building corners. The map also changed slightly in the east downtown area because that area that was previously zoned for car dealerships and Le Schwan and kind of the historic car-oriented uses downtown, those are now supposed to develop as mixed-use. And so those are now a varied block frontage, which is slightly different than before. Also, up near the courthouse, the block frontage standards are extended a little bit further south to go all the way across the front of the given center so that if that project ever, if that building were ever redeveloped or enhanced, it it's subject to a higher, a higher order of architectural standards along its frontage. And then the last change, which is one of the goals in the transportation element of the subarea plan is to make sure that sidewalks are provided in conjunction with new development, redevelopment, or even if you're, if you're doing a project where you're remodeling, doing like a significant remodel of an existing building, if your sidewalks in front of your building are cracked or don't meet ADA accessibility, we don't always have the ability to impose frontage improvements where you would replace or construct sidewalks. The the chapter 20.202 is a code that we have borrowed from the city of Tacoma. And this is sort of a catch. And this is sort of a catchall that instead of relying on our concurrency test, which some projects aren't subject to concurrency. Or um. Because this is a planned action, we're proposing a planned action ordinance where you won't have to go through CIPA for these projects. We have to have it in our code to ensure that frontage improvements get built as development happens in our downtown. So this code has been written to make sure that developers are providing sidewalks or other off street off site improvements as needed, landscape strips. Um, if if somebody's alley is unimproved and they go build an apartment building, we can make them pave the alley or or bring it up to. Uh, an adequate standard to serve their site. Um, but there are limitations. Um, for for new construction, we don't define a limit, but if you're doing remodels, we are capping. The total cost that you can can be incurred to a percentage of the valuation of the project so that you're not. Uh, being asked to spend a million dollars to do a a hundred thousand dollar remodel. Um, we are, we are being reasonable in terms of how much uh a project would would have to spend on fixing a sidewalk. Or uh an ADA issue that is on uh that is off site uh in the adjacent right of way. And that is the conclusion of my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Mr. Bond. Lot of information. I know. I think it's a great body of work, though.
That's what I was just going to say is that it is a lot of information, but it was very. Well laid out and easy to follow. Thank you.
And I I did notice that Mitch from our consultant uh G G L O is here and um, I, if you have any. Technical questions for him or Mitch, if there's something that you think I need to. Touch on that um I didn't say, please. Please, please jump in.
Oh, you care covered it all well, Nick. And um, yeah, I'm here. Any specific questions I can help out with?
Cindy, go ahead.
I I do have a question about the height increases at the end of Prospect. Um, and and bordering on Bay Street. You're saying that you're going to have an allowance that these buildings can go higher or the buildings can go higher in that area. Um, would any building exceed? The height of City Hall's clock tower?
I can find my unmute button. Um, no, the clock tower, I believe, is um, I think it sixty five seventy feet. Uh, is the the height of the top of that roof. Um, so no, none of these buildings would would uh go that high.
Even with the allowance, say if something, if a developer was to put in a grocery store. And um, extra allowance was given to their their project, nothing would take it. With with them most, let me just ask this, when most of the buildings then be about the same height then as the city hall? Um, not count, not counting the the clock tower, just.
You're right, there, there is a bonus for a. A grocery store. And so with a grocery store bonus, you're going to be pretty close. To city hall, but that's not what is currently proposed next to city hall uh right now because that that's going to have. Very shallow retail on the ground floor because of accommodating the parking structure. So I don't think you have to worry about that next to city hall. Um, in terms of this, the second part of your question.
Six forty Bay Street?
No.
No.
No, they're doing a parking structure and residential on top of it.
And that um, the the height there is for five uh downtown height overlay district. Five to five stories. However, there's a setback requirement. So within fifty feet of Robert Geiger, I believe, was the dimension. Um, it's only four stories allowed, and that's to allow for that prominence of city hall, the clock tower to remain.
Yeah, I was just wondering about that. When you give allowance for the the rising tides and uh building higher on Bay Street area and then. The possibility of the grocery store and all of that, I just wondered how high this would actually go.
Yeah, it's it's hard to say. I think that we're providing flexibility, but by providing a cap on on. The number of stories that can be constructed in a building, I don't think you're going to see things maxed out. But we're providing enough flexibility for um for designers to to work without. Uh, having to come in and ask for a variance because they're trying to squeeze mechanical equipment in or or have some other site specific design challenge.
But just one other thing regarding parking to it, you have eliminated um. The need for extra parking for extra bedrooms. It's not geared anymore towards the number of bedrooms. So. You've got one, really one stall per unit. Um, and so that means then that would people have the opportunity to purchase additional parking in a structure? Or they're going to be parking on city streets? Where are they going to put their extra vehicles?
Well, I I think if you look at the trends in terms of what multifamily units we're seeing. We we are seeing a lot of one bedroom apartments right now because there that that is just something that is in demand. And um. So I think that the, right now, we require one point five stalls for a one bedroom apartment, which I believe is too much. I also think that if you look at the residential parking demand. Um, most, when when you're not in a pandemic, at least, most. People are going somewhere during the day and coming back at night. And so the the. Uh, residential parking and business parking tends to be compatible in that they have similar peak parking times. Um, and if if they're not compatible, I think you're more, you're less likely to own multiple vehicles because. You're taking the ferry to work and you don't need multiple vehicles. So I think. Um, it it it's a really good synergy between the residential uses. With transit to the shipyard and on to um Seattle and the fact that we're seeing mostly one bedroom type units that are probably. Likely to have a a single car. And there is going to be parking, uh, I, well. I can't say what, how the um. How they will operate the building between Robert Geiger and Frederick Bay and in Prospect. But I assume that that parking is going to be available for rent even for people outside of that building because they're going to have more than enough. Uh, parking and even the city may look to to take some of that parking for employees during the day. I I think it'll, it'll provide flexibility, but it won't be, it won't be free parking.
Well, and I think another element to consider too is that. These, the the proposals we're seeing, these are forty to sixty million dollar projects. A developer is not going to build less parking than what they need. To be for their project to be marketable. They can't build this and then not be able to lease it up because they don't have enough parking there, you know. Nick's correct that they're going to balance it between the, you know, the the mixed use element, the the business element. To the uh um. To the residential and then. What what I'm hearing now is they're asking us how many stalls we want. How many, you know, and then and I'm saying as many as we can afford because we're, we're growing our operation here at city hall also. I know that they're in con- contact with Mr. Clausen at Kitsap Transit. And the port of Bremerton, we all have parking needs. So I think there's going to be. You know, they're trying to size that parking garage appropriately. So, our change.
And Nick, can you just summarize that, I guess, the two members of the public at the planning commission, what their concerns were?
One of them had a concern because we have a goal. In the plan that says. Um, support the county in its efforts to acquire land for property and his property is one that the county is looking to buy and he's been. Um, I think uh fighting with the county for a number of years. And so he said, why would the city help the county? Do something that I don't want them to do. So it was a very, it was a very specific kind of unique circumstance that wasn't so much the plan. It was more of. Um, uh. You know, a an eminent domain or a non eminent domain type type issue, I think. Uh, the other comment, there was some questions about the zoning along Klein and what was happening with the zoning. And after it was a question, not a comment, and they wanted to know what they were able to do under the residential mixed use zone. And we explained that. Houses are allowed to remain, um, they're they're conforming. Um, you can replace a house if you want to, but we're expanding so that you can also build townhomes or if you have the opportunity to do some kind of infill development. There's some attached housing as well, but it's low scale and they seem pleased with that as well. I think they were a landlord, not a resident. And so potentially they would be interested in that sort of thing.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Bond? Comments?
So one thing, so if anybody wants a hard copy of Nick's. Document, um, public works department inadvertently printed out his entire hundred and seventy four page document. So. I will have it here, Cindy, with your name on it. It'll just be up at the front.
So Nick, what are the next steps?
Well, on the twenty fifth, um, like I said, we will have another public hearing. It's the last chance for the public to have. Uh, to make comments on the proposal before um, action can be taken. Um. This will be adopted on the twenty fifth because we have to submit for reimbursement under our grant by the end of June. And we're, we're getting, we're coming down to the wires. There's not much time to delay this beyond. Um, maybe one more meeting because we're going to have to get our our building submitted. Um, once the sub area plan is adopted, I'm working with uh the attorney and. Uh, Carrie and in the planning department, and we are going to bring forward the planned action ordinance. Which is the the CIPA document that you'll, it's it's an ordinance that you'll have to pass. And it's going to specify what development can happen under the downtown sub area plan and E I S. Without going through further environmental review. So we're going to identify a number of housing units. Uh, an amount of non residential square footage, uh, the community event center, the county uh campus. And all of those projects will be, we'll we'll simply have a quota and it's kind of going to be a first come, first served basis, but. Up to a certain level of development will be able to be permitted um without additional CIPA review. Um, provided it it falls under the planned action ordinance. And so that would come to your June. Work study meeting and we'd be aiming for adoption uh at the end of June for for that ordinance. And we'll be taking that to land use committee, which um we also need to to pick a date uh for that meeting, but. Uh, sometime in early June, we need to have a land use committee meeting so that we can discuss the planned action ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bond. So council members, with your indulgence, I don't believe that Deputy Chief Maine has any interest in a sixty minute discussion. Of about capital facility charges. So I, if you may, she's got a quick item that is five or ten minutes. And I'd like to take that next. And uh, we, the chief Brown is out of town and so deputy chief Maine is. Filling in for him and we have an opportunity with a grant, a partner with partnering with Kitsap County. On a WASP packet, which is Washington Associate of the Sheriff's and Police Chiefs. Are providing a grant that would be no cost to the city and and Donna is going to talk a little bit about that grant. And I see no reason why we wouldn't want to do this and. The finance committee saw this earlier this evening and concurred that we should move forward with this. So go ahead, deputy chief.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Thank you for five minutes. I promised five minutes. Um. There's uh no funds that I'm asking for, so rest assured, I'm not asking for any money, but uh. Just five minutes of your time to see if uh you find this uh grant maybe uh viable to our city as well. So. Uh, really quickly, the Kitsap County Sheriff's Office reached out to us um on the tenth, asking. If we could partner with them to be a part of. Uh, this grant that they want to apply for, and in order for them to apply, they need a partner. Uh, in this uh in this grant. So they reached out to us. It's a grant that would allow. Um. The uh hiring of two new uh D C Rs, which are designated crisis response. Team is what it would be, but they need uh another agency. And so they reached out to us. Um, and what this would allow is to have these D C Rs come out to the field. And provide uh their expertise uh when facing somebody in a crisis. Um, hopefully twenty four hours a day that we could, they would be on call, they'd be working. Either with the sheriff's office or one with South Kitsap Fire and Rescue. And so uh what the county has asked is, is if we would like to participate in this. It would be kind of a pilot program for just the south end. Which would include the city limits of Port Orchard and then just the south end of the county. But um, they're looking for us to kind of jump in so they can submit this uh grant. Uh, and try to offer our community just one more choice on maybe that. Uh, that crisis intervention, a person could maybe talk somebody out of crisis, talk them into go to the hospital to get the care they need. Um, and it would really give the officers another uh de escalation tool in our toolbox. To maybe try to help some of the community members that are in a really crisis mode where our navigator. Does not work twenty four hours a day. So this kind of fills into that gap where it might be needed. Uh, out in the field in the middle of the night, there would be somebody available. So. Um, I guess I'm I'm asking that the council approve the participation. Uh, for the Port Orchard Police Department to be a part of the grant. No funds, no fiscal uh impact on Port Orchard at all, just um, you know, our ability to use. Uh, that D C R when the time comes, if it's needed, um, to give the community just one more tool. Uh, to help some people. So I don't know if I covered that in a nutshell. I tried to be quick.
I think you did, and all we're looking for tonight is some heads nodding to move forward and. We'll bring this back probably at next week's meeting to uh um. For your concurrence. And I saw Councilor Deener had his hand raised first. If I couldn't, I'll call him Councilor Clausen, or is that raised from earlier?
So that that was raised from earlier and I'll just pick up that comment at the the end of the evening, but uh.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed you.
That's all right. In terms of uh this program, I'm I'm very much in support of it. Uh, I had often wondered how the navigator program was going to be able to provide the sport, the support on a. Uh, round the clock basis. Um, and so I think this is, this is a great program and I'm I'm behind it all the way.
I appreciate that. And this doesn't um take place uh with the navigator, but it will actually work in unison. So. Once the person that's literally in crisis at that moment. They go get treatment at the hospital or where they need to go, then the following day Melissa can pick up and do the awesome work that she's doing. Uh, with follow up and getting these people um in the direction that they need to go. So I appreciate.
Will this person or these people ride with the officers?
So the plan is um, the Kitsap County Sheriff's Department right now, they have what's called a C I O officer, a crisis. Crisis Intervention Officer. They have a full time officer. So one of the D C Rs will ride with. The county officer and then South Kitsap Fire is hoping to get a uh behavioral health paramedic. And they'll have a designated ambulance that would have the other D C R. And they would be having an office out of South Kitsap Fire. So, you know, one would work in the day, one would work. Uh, in the night and there's, there's not going to be, uh, there will be a little bit of. Gap where there isn't anyone on, but we close that gap to offer those services.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Clausen?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what the mayor indicated. We talked about this briefly at the finance committee and the finance committee was very supportive as you can. See, there's no cost to the city and it, I think the mayor referred to it as a no brainer. Which I think we agreed. So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Luca Rele.
Yes, I was just wondering, is there a a limited period of time or for this whole project to take place? The grant is for like a year or three or for what period of time?
Okay, so the funding is from July first of twenty twenty one through June thirtieth of twenty twenty two. And so if the program is a success, then they plan on, you know, reaching out to more agencies and they'll reapply in twenty twenty two. The deadline for this uh grant, they're literally waiting on our decision uh is May twenty first. So we have just a couple of days. Um, to submit whether or not we would like to participate uh in this program.
So basically, there would be no cost right now for the next year or so, but depending on. The refunding in the future of those positions, we may be asked to help fund them?
I, that I I can't give you a definite answer on that. I know there's no cost to us for this uh for this um. I guess, this period, there's no cost uh for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm not positive, Charlie, does this need to come back before council? Or can we just, I don't think it requires formal action. So based on your comments here this evening, I I'm gonna. Uh, let the chief and and Donna know to proceed with uh with uh. Let lending our letter of support for the grant.
Yeah, this was just for a head nod on the submission of the grant application. And then if the grant is awarded. We will work with the county's attorney to draft an I L A that negotiates the terms. So. Things like what happens next year when the funding runs out would be dealt with in that, which will come back to council for your approval.
Okay, other questions? Everybody getting thumbs up from John, I'm seeing thumbs up from everybody. Wonderful. Thank you. All right, before we jump into. All right, before we jump into, thank you, Donna.
Thank you. I appreciate your support. Thank you. I'm going to jump off.
Yes, sure. You don't want to talk about water capital facilities charged for the next hour. You're welcome to.
I do appreciate the offer. Thank you very much.
And before we jump into that, Councilmember Dean, I'm sorry I missed your comment or question earlier. I'm, I'm more than happy to back up here a little bit.
Well, I just was gonna just recognize that. Nick and his group has done a lot of work to get the comprehensive plan and the sub area plans together and they've shopped it against land use committee and the planning commission. And the council at large and has, has moved it back and forth. And so there's been a lot of. Bites at the apple over time and, and I think it's turned out a product that I think we can all really appreciate and stand behind. But mostly I just wanted to recognize them for the hard work that, that goes into these kinds of efforts and, and it's really well done.
As, as a planner yourself, I, I'm certain you recognize. Much, in much more depth and depth than the rest of us do. But yes, I, I do, and I'm certain all of you appreciate. The work Nick and the work as Nick and his staff have done. I think. As a group, I think I wouldn't trade any of our directors for, for anybody out there. So we've got a good group of people that we've assembled here. So with that, with all those accolades, let's, let's talk about a water system capital facilities charge. Mr. Crocker, I think you were tasked with a few things from our last meeting and you've probably got some answers.
Hopefully some, and hopefully it's gonna be part refresher. For, for everybody here. So I kind of have a couple of goals with tonight. A to give some background from where we've come. And again, speaking to the public at this workday session. We're going to cover some elements of the water code that are directly related from some questions raised last week. And then we're going to discuss again the current proposal.
You muted yourself, Noah.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Sorry about that. So first slide here, I want to jump in and highlight the timetable in which we've been discussing the water CFCs. Again, we've been discussing the CFCs all of 2021. We, this first was discussed at the February till the committee meeting where they reviewed the water code. And then it's chapter. From there, we kind of touched base on and off with the finance utility committee as well as full council on our timeline. Which really brought us to the April 20th. Study session where we brought in Kitty Isaacson to attend and provide us an overview of all the capital facility charges. As well as reviewing the methodologies for calculating these fees. On the 27th, the following week, we discussed the full water capital improvement plan. As well as following that up with those calculations which led to the water CFC. Following a good discussion, now that mean we came back with revised and updated water CIP as well as CFC. And held the public hearing again to gather public comment and feedback. Again, another great effort out of that public feedback raised some more questions regarding the water code and in particular regarding exceptions. Again, which we'll revisit a little later in this presentation. So all this work is leading up towards next week, the 25th for an adoption of the water updated CFC. For those watching at home, I simply want to identify the Port Orchard Municipal Code, of which we'll be discussing tonight. So for future reference, these are the important chapters regarding water and fees. So back to this slide, the water system capital facilities charges. On this slide, we review sub point one. Of the water capital facility chapter, the water facility charge is designed to mitigate. The impact of new demands on our existing water system and require new users to pay their fair share of the value of the water systems. This is including our water supply, our treatment, our transmission, storage and distribution of all our facilities. Water CFC applies to new construction, changes in use and building modifications. Which increase the total number of equivalent residential units or ERUs. And ERUs defined as 180 gallons per day for non-residential connections. And it's important that prior to connecting to the city's water system that the property owners pay. In addition to all other charges such as building permit fees, the applicable water capital facilities charge. As we've discussed both in the Port Orchard Municipal Code as well as in previous discussions throughout the year. The capital charges are one-time fees paid at the time of development. Intended to recover a share of the cost of the system's capacity need to serve growth. Again, they serve two primary purposes. First, to provide equity between our existing customers and our new customers. And secondly, to provide a source of funding for our future system capital costs as growth occurs in the city. The table here illustrates the water capital improvement plan, which we've discussed. As you can identify, the total cost of our water CIP is roughly $50.6 million. With approximately 65% of that total or $33 million attributable to servicing future growth. So I want to pause on this sliding, give the council another opportunity to discuss if, if it's desired. Again, this table reflects our current CFC rate at $5,945. In our previous meetings, we've discussed the methodologies as well as the calculations of alternatives A through D. And staff is recommending alternative D with the support of the finance committee. And so I just want to again pause there and ensure that the council's comfortable with staff bringing alternative D forward. Next week as, as that is kind of where we are comfortable at this time. Okay, great.
Noah?
Yes.
Yeah, the, I know that, I believe that Councilmember Cucci already had some questions over this time period. Were those? His questions completely answered?
Yes, they were. And we, he is, he was actually instrumental in, in helping us develop, develop alternative D. He participated in a working group with, with staff and I as we developed alternative D.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. And if you have an opportunity to go back and kind of re-watch our, our previous meeting last week, we really went into alternative, each alternative. And the methodology as well as the calculation to how we arrived at it. And we had a really robust and really good discussion. I think again, at the last two meetings on these alternatives. So I, I believe his questions was answered. Yeah. So with the proposed adjustment. The table, this table here represents all the adjustments that will go into the fee code coming forward next week. As you see, there's the residential element, the ERU, the 11,571 proposed change. As well as the non-residential that is driven by meter size. And you can see the proposed charge in the far right column based on the meter size. So this is the table that will come forth next week and will be adjusted. So I just wanted to give you guys a chance to see that. So then lastly, last week, there were a number of questions raised regarding credits. Against a water CFC as well as exceptions against the water CFC. At the finance committee tonight, we walked through this particular code. And out of that discussion, there was a desire to revisit the code more thoroughly to account for mixed use. In our discussion, we identified that the code isn't clear and it tends to be a little bit silent on how we treat redevelopment. And in particular, mixed use. So Councilmember Ashby asked some really good questions and she asked me to bring forward the code, the water code on exceptions. And what you'll find here, in order to qualify for an exception against a water CFC, you have to meet these four criteria. And we can briefly walk through these so I can catch the rest of the council up on the exception piece. But I want to tee it up that, but the finance committee did ask that we bring back some more discussion on the code on exceptions. On redevelopment and have some greater policy discussions on that. So first. All four of these elements listed below must be present to qualify for the exception. So the first. Requirement is a non-residential account. Again, I'm saying a non-residential account, meaning a commercial account. Had to have paid the water CFC charge at the time the property was connected to the water system. The second criteria is that sometime after the original connection, the property owner decides to construct a new building or change the use or modify the building in some way. The third criteria is after the building improvements are completed, the total water usage for the non-residential account. Will be equal to or less than the usage at the time of original connection. So I want to pause on that one because that, that's an important one. As you redevelop, you can have equal water usage or less. And receive an exception from paying the wire CFC. But if it's more, then you do not qualify. And you still have to meet the other three as well. And then the last one, of course, is the new construction change in use or building modification. Has not resulted in any additional direct connections to the city's water system. So again, in order to qualify for an exception, you have to meet all four criteria. For that to be present. And so this where it gets kind of sticky, silent, difficult to assess. The downtown redevelopment as each building on its loan own would be a standalone case. You'd have to reevaluate it based on this criteria. Did the original structure pay a CFC at the time of connection? Is there going to, I think the second one's pretty, pretty straightforward. The third one is, is there going to be an increase in water usage? And if so, then it does not qualify for a water exception. So as you think, same building size, same restaurant to restaurant, restaurant one to restaurant one, that would qualify. Restaurant to mixed use does not qualify per our code. So, so. So it was a great conversation at the finance committee. Again, just focusing clearly on the code.
And I think I, I forward to all of you today, earlier today. A request by Mr. Baglio on his project. He's really brought this to light and. The potential deficiencies in our code and gave us an example of some Vancouver language and. I, there was a robust conversation about this at the finance committee and we feel that this needs more conversation. And we would like to bring that back to a future work study as staff works it to develop some code. That could potentially help for those redevelopment opportunities to get credit for. What has been historical use on the property. You wouldn't get all of your connections taken care of, but some of them based on your historical usage. Usage. And John or Beck, do you have anything you'd like to add from that finance committee discussion?
Well, I think what you raised, Mayor, is, is very accurate. I think the discussion that we had was. The general principle that what Mr. Baglio had suggested made perfect sense and. Seemed to be fair. It would encourage redevelopment. Unfortunately, our code, the way it's written, does not provide that opportunity. So. We talked about revising the code. And as we go through there, I'm sure there will be nuances that will. Come to light as we talk about the language, but. That's the part that I think we all need to be collectively involved in the rewriting of the code. If the council agrees with the premise that, that we're suggesting. And as the mayor indicated, some language that was provided from Vancouver. Pretty straightforward. If you had an opportunity to look at it and seemed to be pretty reasonable. So we just need to get our code. Modified so that we can allow that as well.
Thank you.
Anything?
I would just add that when we think about redevelopment within our city, we do anticipate that downtown is the greatest candidate for redevelopment. And we would like to see that happen. However, with the sub area plan that we're looking at. We would anticipate that it would redevelop in a different manner than how the buildings are being used now. And so it's important that we're very clear in our code what the developers. May or may not do and what it may cost them. And so revisiting our code, we think is, is, this is an opportune time to do that. In preparation for redevelopment.
And I would add in my mind. By saying that downtown redevelopment, in my mind at least, kind of limits it where I really think it's more the downtown commercial core because. For me, it would go all the way east to West Bay Shopping Center and in there. So it's not just. That two block segment of Bay Street or three block segment.
Right. I'm thinking of the whole sub area plan that we just looked at.
Right.
Exactly. Exactly.
And it could end up, you know, I think these provisions could assist in redevelopment opportunities at the mall. I know it just. Old. You know, any, any of that going up Mile Hill, it's really this, the redevelopment opportunities where, where there just isn't. Our code isn't as clear as it needs to be and it doesn't provide. The, you know, I'm not saying, and it's not an incentive, it's just credit for what the historical usage was.
You know, and everyone keeps using the word credit and, and. I prefer to think of it as having their historic usage being recognized. Rather than totally lost, it's being recognized.
Good point, yeah. Other council members have any questions or comments about what I sent to you guys or, or what we're talking about here? All right. You can move on in your presentation.
These are two other excerpts out of that chapter. Again, since we're going to be revisiting it, I don't want to spend too much time on it. But there is a timetable under exception 10. Where the cost of improvements incurred. Made to the city for improvements that are the basis for the value of the CFC that were made 15 years or more prior to the date of the request. Are not eligible as well. So I think then Vancouver example has a 10-year clock on it. And so I think that will be part of our discussion is what is the policy direction of the council? Is it something limited to a 10-year? Is it something different? Is it a five-year historical average? Well, I just have to figure out what that policy. Makes sense for this. So then we come to next slide, next steps. We plan on having the ordinance for the water CFC next week for adoption. And in that ordinance, we've identified an effective date as of June 14th of 2021. For when the new fees would come into effect. And I'd like to pause at this moment and see if Nick Bond is still on the call. And ask him to kind of discuss a little bit on the implementation strategy. That he's really thought through and how it impacts his department and how he can roll this out successfully with his staffing requirements.
Yes, thank you, Noah. So at our last meeting, when we were having a discussion on this topic, we received a public comment from. Brienne, who works for Tarragon Development and she had requested that we. Provide some flexibility for those projects that are already in for permitting and they've been waiting for plan review to be completed by the city. And we discussed this internally with the mayor and the directors. To try to come up with a solution that was fair and, and worked for. For all parties. And the first, the first step that we took is we actually pulled. From our permit system, all of the permits that are currently pending approval or those that are approved but not yet issued to figure out. How many permits are actually affected by this change or potentially affected? And as of the date that we pulled that data about a week ago. There were about 30 permits waiting to be, are in, in for review and a handful that were ready to issue. Of the permits being reviewed, half of those are single-family. Dwelling that for the most part could be ready to issue. By the time our proposed ordinance takes effect. And so there is an opportunity for those single-family. Permittees to pick up their, their permits before the, the fee changes. Of course, if any permits came in now. They may not come in under the wire in, in order for us to actually review those before, before the fee changes. But based on the, the submittal dates, we determined that permits that were in before March 1st, which I think that was really the first. Where we started having any sort of public discussion of this issue was in March. If, if you had permits in and paid your plan review fees, we felt that we needed to give you an opportunity to actually pay your fee and pick up your permit. Because we are down with, with John Robinson's retirement, we have been without. Because we are down with, with John Robinson's retirement, we have been without a building plan reviewer since the end of the year and we've been using a consultant. We are, we are definitely beyond our targets for plan review right now in terms of how much time it takes to review projects. And so for those apartment projects, they're, they're likely going to be ready to issue in July. But developers really aren't comfortable paying a sewer or a water connection fee if they don't actually have an approved permit that they can also pick up. They're not going to write a check for $1.5 million in connection fees for an apartment project. If they don't have some assurance that they'll actually get their building permit. So in order to get those building permits issued, we were thinking that mid-July to early August is sort of a timeframe that would work if we provided a grace period under which those permits that had been submitted to the city prior to March 1st, as long as they pay their fee by, by midsummer would be locked into the old rate. However, with the discussion of giving or recognizing the value of redevelopment downtown and the code changes that would be needed to implement that. I, I don't want to rush the city council through that process. I think it could probably be done in 30 days, but it may take longer. And so one of the permits that's ready to issue is seeking to receive the value associated with the existing use of the property that is redeveloping rather than having to pay all new connection fees. And so if we're going to change the code, the end of July probably is, is cutting it a little bit too close. I think the recommendation would be to, to provide sort of some leeway until August 31st. Where developers who had permits in prior to March 1st would be able to pay the existing rate. But anything submitted after March 1st would pay the new rate effective June 14th of this year. And we picked June 14th. It's, it's the second Monday of June. If we change the fees, we have to change a lot of forms. We have to enter it into our computer system and recalculate all of the permit fees for all of the pending permits. So that gives us about three weeks to, to implement the change, assuming that you pass an ordinance next week. So I hopefully that was clear. If you have any questions, I'm happy to, to answer them.
Yes, member Rosa Pepe.
Sorry, sorry, I was on mute. Just curiosity, what's the delta difference in the, the total amount of funds that we would be received if we extended it down to, to August?
So the, the worst, the we could be foregoing up to $1.5 million in revenue. One project accounts for $1.3 million of that, that total. That's the 216 unit apartment project that submitted their permits in January. The single family homes account for less than $100,000. And then there's another apartment complex that has about $150,000 CFC that are, they would pay an additional $150,000 as a result of this change. So we would be foregoing about one, up to $1.6 million. But that's not to say that somebody, that some of these permittees can, they can come in and pay their, their connection fee now and, and get in under the wire anyway. It's just that they're not willing to because their permits aren't necessarily ready to issue.
Thank you.
Are there questions of Nick on this? Okay. So the propose, our plan is to bring this new capital facilities charge forward for your approval next week. And to that staff and I and legal counsel will work on some discussion about our code in, as it relates to exceptions or as Beck framed it giving credit for historic water usage, I guess. So I'm, and then we'll bring, bring that back to you for further discussion and potential modification in the next 30 to 60 days. So all right, we, we good with that one? So we've got one last item on the agenda. Jay asked that we add that. And since our last meeting, I think the governor has answered this question. I think Jay's question is, when are we going to meet in person? And based on the governor's new reopening plan as of June 30th, I, if everything goes as, continues to go with the way that it's going with COVID, that I think we could have our first council meeting, the first meeting in July would be my proposal to you. We're planning on a soft opening of City Hall on June 7th. And really not much difference as of July 1st, we're still trying to limit the number of people and vendors that come into the workplace and open the common spaces. Because there's still additional cleaning requirements. We don't plan to allow for rentals of our rooms or spaces because we would have to provide additional cleaning and there's nobody to do that besides our public work staff. And it's important that they're out fixing potholes and streets and repairing water lines and not and not, you know, cleaning our facilities midday multiple times. So we're going to hold off until the, on the rental of our facilities until after the, the, the cleaning requirements have been lifted is what, is what I'm planning for. We're working Charlie and Debbie Lund, our HR manager, and I've been working on a new policy related to the, for the ability for a vaccinated employee to not have to wear a mask in our workplace and what that process would be. I would hope that we could use something similar for the council members. Because if you've been vaccinated, I don't, we don't have to socially, socially distance you guys. So probably if I, if you're, if you indulge me and you may be providing a copy of your vaccination card to, to Debbie. That way we've ensured that everybody that we're allowing not to have a mask on and isn't socially distanced in the building is compliant with the governor's orders. So and I haven't heard of any of you that aren't vaccinated. So I shouldn't, shouldn't be a problem, but if there is, let's talk about that offline so that we can get that solved. You just have to, it's not that you can't be there. We just have to distance you from other folks and we have to, you know, have you wear a mask. So I guess one question I have is we come now that now, once the emergency order is lifted, our ability to utilize Zoom for this remote access goes away. And would you, some cities have a policy that allows for remote access for a few meetings a year for a council member? And do you wish to have that flexibility? And, and maybe you want to think about that or maybe you've got some thoughts on it right now? Go ahead, John. You're, you're muted, John.
I've tried to push the right button. Sorry. Couple of things come to mind in regards to this whole change. And one, you know, we've had pretty decent attendance at these meetings using the Zoom format. And I would like to try to figure out some way that we could a hybrid that could continue both. So that I don't know, it's going to be interesting to see what the attendance is going to be like when we get back to in-person meetings. I'd like to try to figure out a way that we could do both so that those who would prefer to come to the meeting via virtual could do that. And those who want to come to an in-person could do that as well. So that's the first thing. Second one is something that just kind of jumped in my mind when you talked about the governor's change. We put kind of a hold on addressing any community festivals.
Yeah. So my next, it's, we're planning on bringing that forward next week. Because as of July 1st, there's no reason not to allow for the festival, like I don't believe. So Brandy and I have that on the agenda for next week to, to lift that resolution that was stopping the processing of applications.
Because you answered my question. Before I even got the chance to ask it.
I had it on my list of things to cover tonight. So, and to your first question, we, we've got new technology. We're still training ourselves on it. But our plan is to live stream and we're doing it tonight. It says on Facebook, I thought we were doing YouTube, but going forward, our new equipment is YouTube. It will be live streaming our meetings as they're happening for anybody that wants to watch. And I see we have a handful of people tonight watching our meeting. And we have the ability to bring, we have a Zoom card, I'm calling it. And we have the ability to, to do exactly what you're talking about, John. And so part of my question is, do you want occasionally to allow a council member to, to participate that way or, or not? It's your, it's your call. It's your guys' meeting.
I don't have a problem with allowing it occasionally. It seems to work fine for the last year. So.
Okay. All right. I'm going to call on Beck next and then Sydney.
I was just going to echo what John said. I personally have taken advantage of the Zoom meetings. And I know currently council member Rosa Pepe has been out of town for the last several weeks. And he has not missed a meeting. And so I would prefer to allow the council members the opportunity to attend, even if their personal schedules, you know, take them out of town.
Okay. Council, council member Luca Relli.
Well, I wouldn't be here tonight if we couldn't zoom because I'm on vacation. And I do think given the nature of what's happening all around us, that there's going to be a lot of hybrid type situations that we should try as hard as possible to allow for that because it would allow for, I think, better attendance.
I, I'm just fearful if we don't craft some good language and maybe look at what some other cities are doing. I would hate for some, I wouldn't, none of you guys would do this because you're, but I hate for somebody to get elected that never, never comes to in person though either. So there needs to be some, I think, rules and boundaries to it. To, you know, so council member Deener.
So you just mentioned something that I thought was important to talk about too, is that there needs to be some structure to this. And if we're talking about occasionally, what does occasionally mean? And I also think it's important to offer an opportunity for people who want to attend in person to testify to be able to do so. And I would hate for them to show up and have one person from the council represented in City Hall. And so I certainly am in support of what I consider to be some sort of a hybrid approach to this. But it's, it's got to be reasonable and it's got to have the public's best interest in mind. So I'm, I'm fully engaged in talking about this some more.
Okay. Wonderful. Our chain.
I also support the hybrid and I would be concerned that we have guidelines. Talking about a council member remaining a resident of the city. We hear a lot about a lot of people telecommuting who are able to do it from outside their normal work office. And I'm sure this wouldn't happen, but I think we would need language to just clarify that that would be a concern we'd want to address. And have we thought about the hybrid with committees? It's actually been very convenient to be able to zoom for some of the committee meetings.
I, to follow on that, I think that our committee meetings are more successful because of all the supporting documentation that is shared that in our former structure, the public, there was no, the, the record, it wasn't being captured for the record and the public couldn't watch it later and see, see all those, there's, there's a lot of information that comes before you, you guys. And, and previously it was a lot of paper. And now it's not. And I, so I think this is, this is way more efficient for everybody. So I would encourage, I mean, they're your committees, but I would encourage your committees where it's practical to, to stick to this format for, for the committee meetings. Be my thought. Councilor Claussen.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think from a committee standpoint, that having it recorded, if you will, or transmitted the way we have within Zoom where the public can have access to the documents as well as see and hear the discussion, I think is pretty valuable. And I appreciate the, the number of great documents we get. I mean, the public is enjoyed probably as much as I have all of Noah's PowerPoint presentations. So I think it's valuable that we try to continue with that.
Council member Rosa Pepe, did you raise your hand?
I did. I would like to also echo my support of the hybrid. But I would also like to thank the council, the mayor and staff for this eight week period when I've been on the road. It was a necessity, as I'm sure most of you know. And I, somewhere along the line, we do need to be able to acknowledge that sometimes members may be gone for an extended period of time due to family situations. So I don't know how we kind of craft that language too, but we probably need to insert that somewhere.
Council member Ashbyon, go back to you.
Okay, just a thought when we're talking about keeping the, our committee meetings on Zoom, I'm very supportive of that. But we have to remember that most of our committee meetings or at least finance utilities and transportation are directly in front of council meetings. So if we're going to keep them on Zoom, we're either going to have to be zooming from council chambers or allow us time to transport.
Yeah, that's, that's true. Or office spaces or conference rooms around City Hall too. We've got good wifi here. So that, that could be an option too. Council member Deener and then council member Luca Relli.
So I just wanted to say that I, I second the support for keeping our committee meetings as are currently structured, but Beck raises a good point about making sure that if we want to zoom from a committee, we also have time to attend council in person.
Yeah. They're your committees. So we're going to do it. How are you guys want to do it? And so we, we've got to work the logistics of that out. That's for certain. Council member Luca Relli.
Well, the truth is, most of those committee meetings were rescheduled to accommodate the Zoom and to have them, to make efficient use of staff in this current situation. So we used to have them scheduled different times. I'm sure we can adapt. I like the hybrid idea.
All right. Charlie and I have some work to do. But we'll get, we'll bring something back. All right. All I have, and as John asked about, and I alluded to the next week, we plan to bring a resolution repealing or we plan to have you repeal your prior resolution related to festivals next week. So, so we can start processing applications for those events after July 1st. All right. With that, anything for the good of the order?
Mayor, I have two announcements real quick, if I may.
You certainly may.
Just I'm, we're waiting for a response from a couple of the land unit members on scheduling a new meeting time. If you could please respond to be much appreciated. Also, the McCormick Urban Village survey is now live. It's on both the DCD website and there's a link through Facebook. We've had an incredible response. I think we're up to 250 responses now. And I would encourage you to share that and pass it along as we start planning the, the commercial core of the McCormick Urban Village area.
And speaking of surveys, the park survey, the signs should be going up by the end of the week. And we'll get a push that on Facebook and on our website. And I can only hope that I get the same response that Nick's getting for the McCormick Village. If I get a couple hundred respondents, I'd be very pleased with, with that effort. So more to come on that and we'll be pushing that out to you soon. Other good of the orders? Wow, eight o'clock and hour and a half, all that, all of that. So.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to ask if the finance committee give its report at this meeting instead of next week? Because we talked about everything that we talked about at the committee, except for sales tax, but I think I'll leave everyone in suspense and wait till next week and share it so the public who may come to the meeting just to hear that could hear it next week.
All right. Well, look forward to your report. All right. With that, enjoy the rest of your evening and we'll see you on Zoom again.